Good evening. We're calling to our the meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners for Wednesday, June 19th. If you could all rise for the presidency. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Madam Auditor, roll call, please.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Mrs. Mathias.
Present.
Mr. Marzinski.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Consideration of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to add to the agenda under 9A. Consider travel permission for adult probation. We have one here for San Diego. I would like to add to go to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Annual Conference from July 14th to 17th, 2019 in Washington, DC for everybody listed on here. Judge Friedman, Judge Thorne, Carissa Stratter, Ashley Ortega, and Ashley Wright, and Eric Larue.
Okay. Do you have?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Then I would approve the agenda as?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider approval of minutes for June 5th.
So moved.
Second.
My second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consideration of claims, Madam Auditor.
This week we have payroll ending June 6th, 2019, in the amount of $1,267,197.86 and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $1,030,106.4.
I did review it earlier. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address? Public comment? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to department head comments. Deering, Chair.
Jeremy Sebicki with the Parks Department. I just had a couple of updates. Spring was rough on the parks. A lot of people probably noticed that. We had standing water in a lot of our parks and grass we couldn't get to for several weeks. But they finally started draining off and we're mowing about 95% of the parks now. So we usually mow. Looking better, but we still do have some standing water and some mud in places. Also wanted to update you on, we got a grant, another grant from the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte. They recently informed us that we were going to get $77,000 from them to put in four exercise stations at, one at each park, and then also water fill stations and bike repair stations at three of our parks. And those will be at Lure, Red Mill, and Blue. Creek Ridge didn't get one because it's right on 400 North and not many people ride their bikes down that road. So there would be no point to encourage people to ride bikes down that road. So just wanted to let you know about those. I sent you pictures and information about that. But good partner, and in the last three years now, they've given us $147,000. They gave us $70,000 for the grant at Lure to put in a paved trail. So they've been helping us out quite a bit.
Jeremy, thanks for everything you're doing. And I also want to thank the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte for their support. They're really doing a lot of work to promote health in our community. And this is another example of promoting health and fitness. So I want to thank them also.
Yeah, I would reiterate that.
And thank you also for your department always looking out for those grants. You don't leave any money on the table.
Yeah, we try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads?
Good evening, Bob Young, Calhoun Highway.
Good evening.
I want to give you a report on the paving. All the asphalt, if you had time to read John Smith's email or not.
Right, right, right.
All the paving's been completed on Joliet Road. Now it's just shoulder work. I think they got all the approaches done, driveways and issues like that. So they'll be, when they get done there, they should be moving directly to the second Community Crossing Project, Severs Road. So hopefully that goes a little smoother than this one did. So that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. And good evening, everyone. When we last met, I had indicated to you that I would share with you the latest figures that the VA supplied with VA expenditures in the county. Well, they've finally published here a couple of weeks ago. So I do want to report that as of 2018, the expenditures moved to $36.3 million, up from $35.6 million the year before, which is .9 million more than the previous year. They do show with their predictive analytics and actuary services that the veterans population is shrinking in a county. It's not a census or anything, it's just a projection. I don't know how to square that unless the outreach is getting a little bit better because as the veteran population decreases, our VA expenditures in the county are increasing. So in the last two years, only the last two years alone, we went from $34 million in expenditures to $36.3, $2.3 million increase. I think we invested a little buck for a big bang, I think.
So could you add, for the public's consumption, can you really explain what you mean by those big dollar amounts and what that means?
Okay, everything that the VA expends in this county, whether it be through pensions, death benefits to survivors, widows, children, things of that nature, education, healthcare benefits, everything that the VA pays for in this county. When it comes to veterans' benefits like compensation, like pension, that's in a form of direct deposit, generally speaking, almost 100% of the time. And those expenditures are going back to the county. Most of it will be anyway. Certainly the state, but most of it's going to be the county. So it benefits the county, and I think the outreach has been a good program.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Another little victory that you could mention, that after continuous badgering by the FAW Action Corps and other organizations, and several trips to Washington, DC, we finally got the Blue Water Navy Act passed.
Yeah, that was just published today. The Blue Water Navy personnel are going to be covered under the AO presumptive conditions, just like if they were boots on the ground. So you can expect a much higher volume of claims coming in, and with the claims come to be additional VA expenditures.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a real good thing. It's long overdue, it's too bad.
What is the total number of the veteran population in our county from your latest report?
From here, it's just under 7,900.
7,900, okay. Thanks for all you do, appreciate that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Are there any other department heads?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve Irick. Couple of things. We also received a Healthcare Foundation grant to compensate our intensive case manager in Drug Court for a year. So we got that covered. Very appreciative of that. We also went to a training, a team of us just yesterday, in IU Northwest about the sequential intercept model, which is basically looking at where behavioral health assessments can be performed from 911 to disposition. So our 911 operators prepared to deal with people with domestic violence issues, with psychological issues, drug issues, all the way through the system, and how we can better navigate and manage those. And as a result, we are eligible to apply for $60,000 this next year and the following year. So we also will be, there's a juvenile team as well that's been pursuing this too. So we're going to try to coordinate with them and come up with one plan. And then finally, tomorrow morning, Mary Beth Levo with some students will be down in the tunnel doing some painting. So if you want to swing by, they're going to start that project.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
If it's okay with both of you, we'd like to send a letter thanking the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte for the several generous events that they have made to probation, to the parks, and also their ongoing work with the neonatal health and lowering infant mortality.
Good idea.
Thank you very much.
One more comment. Steve, could you make sure that some pictures are taken when the students are down doing that project? We're someday going to be having a new county website, and pictures of our young people doing that community service would be really, really wonderful.
Thank you very much. Are there any other department heads? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the next item on the agenda. Those are requests. First item is consider travel permission for adult probation to San Diego.
I should have just stayed up.
Stand.
Yes, this is a conference. It's the National Association of Pretrial Service Agencies Annual Conference. And with criminal rule 26 looming, we thought that getting a little bit more training won't hurt.
Motion to approve.
Also, all the costs are covered by?
Already covered, but the first part we like. All right. Motion has been made.
Yes, second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And then the next items, Steve, again, is a request to travel to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals.
Correct. This is for not only drug court team members, but also veterans' court. So they're going to try to, it's the best training for drug court or problem-solving courts that you can get anywhere. And they have two conferences annually, but this is the one, the bigger one, that they're going to in Washington.
And you already have that in your budget, right?
That's covered by fees, veterans' court's fees.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider permission to pay Superior Court for employee unused sick days. Good evening, Barb.
Good evening, Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. Judge Friedman was not able to be with us tonight for this, and she asked me to read a statement with regards to the request for the sick days. LaPorte Superior Court for Verbatim Court Reporter resigned her position of 26 years with the county. She has accrued 40 unused sick days. Pursuant to the county policy, LaPorte Superior Court for is requesting permission to pay her for the 40 days of accrued unused sick day at a rate of 75 per day for a total of $3,000. After checking their funds in with the auditor's office, they do have the funds available and do not need to ask for an additional appropriation of funds from the council for this.
Motion to approve.
Is this consistent with our policy?
Yes, it is consistent with our sick day policy.
Wonderful, thank you very much. A motion has been made.
Support.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Item C, consider road closures for Healthcare Foundation tour de LaPorte, run and walk August 24th.
We do this every year. Motion to approve that.
Support.
Seconded, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then item D is consider Ziegler Road closure during the fair week.
Will you also do that every?
Yeah, we will.
Motion to approve.
Support for them.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. In old business, consider agency service agreement between the Recorder and Pega.us. If you remember, Recorder Lois Suzinski was here, and she made a presentation, but unfortunately it was not on the agenda last time. That's the reason why we had to vote on it this time.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
So, Mr. President, just before we move, I told Lois, who was not able to be here this evening, that we would answer any questions, but this is a service to the public. It does not cost the county anything to have this service added. And it's something that her office feels will be, will make her office more customer service oriented. And so she's suggesting that we copy, a lot of Recorder's offices use this system, and so it's mainly a service to our community.
Service to the residents.
So I would second Mr. Marzinski's motion.
Thank you very much. Shaw, did you have reviewed this?
Yes, we've had an opportunity to look at it. I believe the county uses two services, Pega and is it iCloud?
Yes.
iCloud is the other one. And so this is consistent with that type of an agreement, and we're comfortable recommending it.
So motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. In the new business, consider permission to approach the council to trade in vehicles, sheriffs.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ron Heig, on behalf of the sheriff's office this evening.
Thank you.
We've begun our yearly process of going to seek out new vehicles, and we're looking for permission to trade in 11 vehicles in part of this process. So we're looking for you guys' approval and support to trade in 11 vehicles.
Any questions for Mr. Heig?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could move down to item E, because that involves the sheriff's office as well.
Yeah, please go ahead.
This is a contract agreement and license agreement for the new software company. It involves our jail medical retention and scanning of medical documents. All we need is you guys' approval on the licensing agreement and the contract. We've got money in our budget to support this. And it's been sent to Mr. Friedman's office.
Because of the fact that Mr. DiMartino, the council attorney, was involved in helping negotiate the jail medical contract, I had him look at these contracts as well. He's comfortable recommending them as well.
Wonderful. I entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Seconded, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll take care of that. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is consider tax sale services support addendum with SRI.
This is an addendum to our annual tax sale that will be held October 18th, I think, this year. I'm pretty sure.
Any questions on the contract? Shaw, anything you wanted to?
No, we're comfortable with it. We've certainly seen SRI contracts before and have had good experience in terms of our contract relationship with them, so we're comfortable recommending it.
Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item C, consider John Emery Railroad Crossing Project MOU between Indot, NICD, and LaPorte County, and seek permission to approach the council for seed money to be reimbursed to the county. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Yeah, this is MOU. I'm asking for your signature. Unique, I guess, grant opportunity is between the county, NICD, and Indot. Indot would be supplying the funding. NICD would be getting new railroad infrastructure, safety infrastructure, gates, lights, et cetera. And the county would be getting a realignment of John Emery Road, which is in Hudson Lake. Right now, it's at like a 30-degree skew. We'd probably tighten it at a 90-degree angle, better line of sight. The unique thing about this grant is it's 100% reimbursable. And actually, in the MOU, I got it to be 105 because myself and Jay Sullivan, we do in the administration. And the grant, I don't know what the grant total is yet, but probably around the neighborhood of $600,000 or $700,000. And we would get 100% reimbursed plus 5%. That'd be our administration costs. And we get those reimbursed as well for the county. So we get a new road, new infrastructure, and 100% reimbursed plus 5. So real good deal for the county. What it needs, and I know Shaw reviewed it, there was an issue with the whole harmless section of it. I think that's cleared up now.
Yes, we got revisions. We've gone through several different drafts. It's a three-party agreement, and I'm much more comfortable now that this is more mutual than the first draft that we saw, so that responsibility and liability is shared by the parties depending on responsibility. So I think it's a much more fair draft that we've got in front of you tonight.
I'm not sure, did they have a copy of it?
Mitch has been to my office two or three times, showed it, explained, and showed me the map. It's a pretty good deal.
Mitch, I've told you this before and I want to repeat again, you are always grant hungry, which we like. We appreciate that.
I think it's a contest between him and Jeremy.
Well, I have to say, the interesting thing about grants is it's great to get them, but then you have to do the administration piece. And Mitch and Jeremy and others spend a lot of time doing that. That's the heavy lifting that nobody, there's no glory to that. It's just a lot of paperwork and data gathering. And so I appreciate that effort.
And project management.
Project management. So this crossing does not have any safety features?
It has gates. One issue with it is at 700 North, it's in Hudson Lake, the NICD line, it's very wide. So right now, you can't put two gates. There's probably 20 feet. The gates go down, there's still 20 feet in between them.
Okay.
So that's an issue right there.
Right.
There's no lights, I don't believe, as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Make motion to approve that.
A motion has been made.
Support.
And then I also need permission to attend the council meeting, because right now there is no funding for this, even though we're getting reimbursed. I need some seed money from the council to start the process going.
That's what the motion here is.
Okay. For the council. For the council. You guys made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And consideration of County Commissioners' appointment to Cankey-Kiriva Basin Commission for House and Road Act 1270.
Mr. President, I move that we appoint, reappoint John Coulter.
John Coulter, senior.
Senior, sorry, senior.
John Coulter, senior. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote no on that. I thought we were going to appoint Tony Hendricks. I thought that all along. I just learned that tonight that was not, so.
Yeah, John had expressed.
Nothing against John, he's a good guy. I just think Tony is way better educated in it. Just my opinion.
To that point, Mr. Marzinski, my understanding is that Tony has attended as a county surveyor to those meetings. And I would encourage Mr. Coulter to reach out to Tony and make sure that when it's appropriate and when advice is needed, that he reach out to all the county departments that support that type of work.
Thank you very much. I think we voted on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider possible change to Reed Riley contract regarding Joliet Road project.
Yes, good evening again. Try to clear some of this up a little bit. We all know the issues we had on Joliet Road with the paving company. And then once we got them started again, the second issue developed. That mixed design is a Class C mixed design spec, which is on the higher end of the specs, better pavement. And what happened is they came to us and admitted that they used the wrong liquid asphalt. It was more for a Class B mixed design. They admitted that, so we know that. So we took some plate samples, and there was four and a half lane miles of that effect. Took some samples and sent them off to the lab, and John Smith's taking care of that. You've seen his emails and stuff. We're waiting for those results to come back. One part of the test has come back, and it's within the passing range, but we don't have the entire result. So I'd like to wait till we get all that, so we can figure out some kind of adjustment reimbursement. So we did the math. I talked to a liquid asphalt expert, been in the business all his life. I've known him for a long time. He gave us the formula, me and Mitch, to figure the tonnage of the liquid asphalt. It's just one ingredient of the entire mix. He gave us the formula to figure out how many tons of liquid asphalt would be in this mix. We knew the square yards, we knew the tonnage that had been laid, the affected area. So we did the math, and then it comes to like a little over $6,000 difference, the difference in the prices of the oil. So it's not really as much as I thought it was going to be. And then there's also going to be an adjustment on the underrun, I call it. They bid the job at $120,000, and they laid $116,000. So there'll be an adjustment there to the tune of, I think, around $28,000. So add that to the $6,000, and we should at least have that much coming back from them. I'd still like to negotiate for a little more, maybe something like they pay for the entire shoulderstone, which we are responsible for. There's only 300 ton of shoulderstone figured into the bid. We need much more than that. Because we changed the job. We went from a two-inch milling fill to, we milled two inches, and we added a two-inch intermediate course to prevent the cracking. So now it gets two inches of surface on top, and that's all done. So I don't know, maybe we can negotiate with them to, for them to take care of that entire amount of that shoulderstone that we would be responsible for. So that'd be maybe to the tune of like maybe $100,000.
So you're going to do the negotiations and then bring this back?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
We'll get the test results first, because what they say, what they told me is, all the ingredients that go into this mixed design, the Class C, they're all there, they're all right, except for the oil. They used the wrong oil.
So the liquid asphalt, from my research, is the most expensive component in the mix. And then, so that's a question, that's a question for me. I appreciate that we're keeping better an eye on the projects. I think that's going to result in better roads for our citizens. I don't understand how they could make a mistake like that, especially after they've been on the hot seat, trying to explain to us how they made mistakes last year for both Indot and the county. So that's a concern. The, I think we need to make sure that they sharpen their pencils and get us the best deal, because now they've laid a road that's incorrect. And we've been waiting a long time to get them back to work, and they've made mistakes. I will say, just, I know that people listen to this and try to understand what we're talking about with the roads. So I have looked at, I don't know if John's here, but I have been looking at his data. And just for those who listen, the temperatures are being checked on every load, and they do seem to be very consistent, and there's really no huge variations in the temperature for those citizens who are following that.
Well, one other thing, we reached out to Indot about this situation, and they've approved us to leave that mat there. It doesn't have to be ground up and repaved. If that was to happen, if they would have to mill that up and repave it, that'd be like $400,000 out of their pocket.
Right.
So I don't know.
So that's a pretty big bargaining chip you've got there.
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
I think they need to listen to you.
We'll stay on it.
All right.
So anyhow, Indot did approve that mix, so they're okay with it. And it really looks good. I don't know if any of you have been out there or not, but it looks really good. And you can't tell the difference when they admitted their mistake and they started doing it right. You can't, you don't see any transition. So it's, I think it's going to be all right. We're just trying to negotiate with them.
The look of the road is one thing, it's the wearability and the performance, long-term performance that I think is the critical factor.
We're going to do that. We're going to watch it real close and get it through winter, check the cracking, you know, if it's normal or abnormal or better than normal. I think maybe we stumbled onto something here. Maybe it is the C mixed design ingredients with the B oil. We'll call it the Bob Young mixed design.
You've come down in history there.
So that's about it. We'll just keep looking.
Thanks for keeping us updated and keeping an eye on this. And then once you finish that negotiation, then we can bring it back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that brings to the end of our agenda Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Mathias.
I just have one area that I'd like to comment on, and that is, yesterday I had the opportunity to go out to the LaPorte County Fairgrounds and review the infrastructure work that's been done.
work that's been done, so just to refresh the memory of all of us, the council, to their great credit, allowed quite a bit of money to be invested in infrastructure improvements based around public health and safety. For those of us that visit the fair often, it's a wonderful piece of our history and our heritage, but there have been health and safety issues out there, electrical issues, sanitary and water issues, the campgrounds was really not a great place to be, so I think that the council needs commendation, the former commission and the current commission needs to be commended. $250,000 debt was forgiven by the county, and then in 2017, $125,000 was invested in infrastructure, $125 in 2018 invested in infrastructure, and in January 2019, the council appropriated another $125,000, so that's about, let me see, $375,000 of new money, and if you go out there, it's pretty darn impressive, there's new sewer and water, there's new, very safe electric. We need to thank our friends at IBEW who donated lots and lots and lots of effort and community service on their dime, not on the taxpayers', so I want to make sure that we commend them for that work. The main thing is to make sure that the fairgrounds for perpetuity is a safe place, a family-friendly place, and a place where there, we reduce our liability as a county. So as we continue along the path of making the fairgrounds a 12-month-a-year attraction and amenity for our families and our community, we want to make sure that we're investing well and following up on preventive maintenance on those items. So I just wanted to make sure, as we head into fair week, in I guess two weeks, the fairgrounds is looking really sharp. I was speaking to the fair board president and he said it's about, with the infrastructure improvements, he said the fairgrounds is about 200% improved, so that was really good to hear, and I just want to, I think it's important for the citizens to hear about what's happening with their money, and also to thank those who've all, you know, kind of all started rowing in the same direction, I think that's to be commended.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Mrazinski.
What's going on, it sounds like the place is caving in here.
Yeah, on your cell phone, if you notice, I don't know if you, I did, I noticed this, it said there was an event today, and I learned it said Juneteenth. I thought it was some kind of, something silly, but I looked it up, and I think this is worth noting, because probably, I didn't know, I'm sure a lot of people here didn't know, this is back in the day when you didn't have a cell phone or Facebook to learn things. Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States, dating back to 1865, it was on June 19th that Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. Note that this was two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official January 1st, 1863. One of the General Grangers' first orders of business was to read to the people of Texas, General Order Number 3, which began most significantly with, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and free labor. The reactions to the profound news ranged from pure shock to immediate jubilation. The celebration of June 19th was coined Juneteenth, and grew with more participation from descendants. The Juneteenth celebration is a time for reassuring each other of praying and gathering remaining family members." I thought that was pretty interesting, two and a half years after the Republicans said, "You're free," the people in Texas didn't know it yet. I think it's pretty cool, so this is Celebration Day, so we'll go home and have a martini. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you very much. I just want to, a couple of things, I want to reiterate what Commissioner Mathias said about the fair, we are coming into the fair week, we are all here unanimous in our support of the fair, we want to continue that tradition, but also make it better for the future, and at the same time, as we go to the council for appropriation, we want to make sure that some of the things that the council wanted gets implemented that way they are happy with the money that has been invested into the fair, and we'll all work together to make it happen. So that was one thing, another thing, I wanted to let everybody know that we had a nice meeting, all the three commissioners met for an informational get-together with the trustees, we have about 21 township trustees in the county, and we heard their concerns and we're going to continue to work with them to make sure that some of those concerns are addressed and taken care of. The last thing I want to mention is that our next meeting, the commission meeting, instead of July 3rd, it'll be on July 1st, Monday at 10 o'clock, and because of the holiday week that's coming up for the July 4th, and so I want everybody to keep, make note of that, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adj--
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you.